So you're doing a little work around the house. How about adding just one more quick thing that will help your home survive a wildfire? In this mitigation minute, how to ditch the debris by mixing the nest? What we're talking about is the stuff that gets stuck in the gutters and those places on your roof where leaves, sticks and everything else just seems to end up, including the nooks and crannies around the foundation. Think of that debris like a bird's nest, but instead of baby birds, imagine embers from a fire carried by the wind, making themselves at home where they smolder for hours, even.
All right, if everyone could find your seats, we're gonna get started. Okay, welcome everybody to our 2024 candidates debate. Yeah, thank you all for coming and those of you on Zoom as well. My name is Kate Clother. I am the new director at the Dunsmere Chamber. And I am excited to welcome three of our candidates here tonight, Sarah Sebring, Amit Tashi, and Dwight Bailey. Hannah Smith may or may not be joining us. She's running for treasurer. And I want to introduce you to our moderator, Rick Simon. Rick spent 32 years in the public sector in rural Northern California, serving as chief planner for Lassen County Community Development and retiring from Shasta County as Director of the Resource Management Department. After retiring, he and his wife settled in Dunsmere to be closer to their adult children, both of whom have open businesses in town with their spouses and grandkids. We have, they have one grandson and two more on the way. Rick is excited to be in Dunsmere and optimistic about his future here. So one note, last note before I go. Those who are present here, if you have a question for our candidates, you may grab a pencil and paper over here, write it down and stick it in this basket. For those of you on Zoom, if you have a question, you can leave it in the comments. The first, Rick is gonna share the flow of the debate with us all, but just so you know, all the questions being taken today will be response, will be shared in the last 40 minutes of today's debate. And with that, I will give it over to Rick.
Yeah. So is this broadcasting out? I mean, can you hear, can you hear me? Okay, good. So a couple of things. First, before I get started in explaining the format for tonight's forum, I do like to call it a forum. It's not a formal debate where there's comments and rebuttals and so forth. We're really here to give the candidates an opportunity to respond to some of your concerns that you submitted as questions and some of the concerns that we have put together as a team as well with the chamber involved. But before I get into that, a couple of things, you were, you saw a save the date announcement on your, on your seats. Siskiyou County Hazard Mitigation Plan Planning Meeting, Monday, November 4th. It fought from 5:00 to 6:00 PM at the Dunsmere City Council Chambers, right here, the Fire Hall Building. So put that in your calendars. One other thing before I proceed. There will be a Veterans Day Processional that will begin in the morning at the Eagles. Complimentary coffee and pastries and a little social gathering. There will be a color guard provided by the sheriff's office and a processional to the cemetery. Following that ceremony, a processional back to the Eagles where there will be a hot dog lunch. And all of that activity is for the benefit of honoring our veterans. All of that will be free to the public, anybody who would like to participate. There will be flyers coming out, so I encourage you to keep your eyes open on the various bulletin boards around town for more details about time of start and so forth. So don't forget about that one. That will be on Veterans Day, the 11th of November. Okay, another logistic, the restroom is down the hall and to the right. We will be taking a 10-minute break. The format here will be about the first 40 minutes we'll spend. Each of the candidates will be given an opportunity to have an opening statement, introduce themselves to you, the voters, and then we have a set of prepared questions that we will go through. And each of the candidates will have an opportunity to respond to those questions. We'll take about a 10-minute break after 40 minutes of that or so. And then when we all reconvene, we will entertain the questions that have been submitted. And we do have some questions that have been submitted early, either by email or somehow or another they've gotten to Kate. And so we are aware of those as well. I will say this, we have a limited amount of time. We've got about an hour and a half. If your question that you feel is very pressing, does not come up during the meeting, please feel free to visit with the candidates that your, that your question concerns either at the break or after the meeting. Or of course, you can always set up a time and place to meet with them one-on-one or as a small group. And I'm sure they'd be happy to oblige according to everybody's calendar, whatever might work. So don't feel like we have ignored you. We just have limited time and limited space. So there will be other opportunities for you to get your questions addressed. Okay, so 10-minute break, then the last half of the, of the meeting will be the questions that come in. Ground rules, as we know, are important here. With regard to the candidates, each of you will have an opportunity to make a three-minute opening statement. Introduce yourselves and, and a three-minute statement. When you've got about 30 seconds left, I will give you the yellow caution triangle. And when your time is up, I'll give you the red stop sign, which means wrap it up right of way, please. You will have two minutes to answer each of the questions as we go through the set of questions. And we will alternate who answers first and then go accordingly. And then at the end, you will be given an opportunity to make about a three-minute closing statement. After all the candidates and questions have been asked, you can wrap up your positions and what you want the voters to know at the very end. In terms of the audience, we would expect decorum overall. Your job is to be quiet, courteous, and attentive. No outbursts, no applause. All that does is distract and take up more time. And again, we're limited on time already. You can submit questions to Kate. She's got pencil and paper over there, and then they would go in the basket. We would ask that the questions be respectful, be impersonal. We're trying to get every candidate to address the issue. So if, if they're specific to a particular candidate, that would be more appropriate for you to take up with them one-on-one at it or a small group again at another time. This forum is really to get as much information from each of the candidates out as possible. Also, as I mentioned before, if your question does not come up during the meeting, find an opportunity and make an appointment with the candidates to further address your concerns. Okay. Any questions, concerns about the ground rules? Anybody feel right now that they can't abide by them? Okay, then we will proceed. All right. You all are all standing. I would invite you to have a seat. And my understanding is that in order to activate the microphone, you need to press it long enough that the screen stays on. And then it will be on, and when you speak, the camera will be directed towards you. If the microphone is not on while you're talking, then the camera for the Zoom audience and the recording will not be, will not go towards, towards you. Okay. Any other technical issues like that? Is that, okay, all right. So the first topic is general information. So actually, I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself. Let's, let's back up and go to your three-minute introductory or opening statement. And Sarah, we can begin with you.
My name is Sarah Sebring. I am a labor and delivery nurse at Mercy Mount Shasta. I've been a nurse for 10 years. Before that, I worked at the Cornerstone for probably close to 10 years. My dad lived here. My mom moved us away when I was five, so I spent my summers here and every other weekend. My dad absolutely loved this town. And so when I graduated nursing school, I knew this is where I wanted to come back to and raise my kids. And I'm not very good at public speaking yet. I'm very nervous. So I'm gonna work on that. Other than that, I just wanna try to make this town the place that I remember growing up in. And I'm willing to learn all of the new things that need to be learned.
Very good. Amit?
Hello, everyone. My name is Amit Tasi. I have been doing business in Dunsmere since 2018 and became the president of Dunsmere since 2020. I studied accounting, corporate finance, and industrial organizational psychology. I run a couple of businesses in Dunsmere. I'm the business partner with the Wheelhouse. I am owner of Cornerstone Cafe, which is sold to a good chef gentleman who will open the place hopefully in mid-November. I am also working on a couple of new projects in Dunsmere. I have several businesses in the Bay Area. I am very business oriented. I love this town. I really wanna help as much as I can. I've seen the challenges that this town is facing, so I'm here to throw my hat and do as best as I can.
Thank you. And Dwight?
Yes, I'm Dwight Bailey. I live at 5906 Castle Avenue. I've been in Dunsmere probably about six years the last time. I went to college, College of the Siskies. And I started living in Dunsmere probably in 1970. I was not 21 years old yet. I know that. It was a good town then. I think it's a good town now. I've been working in Redding most of my last years. I spent 28 years in Shasta College as a maintenance painter. Our carpenter got killed in a plane crash during that time. And I was a six-month painter on contract, working more than six months. But it was in my best interest to go ahead and to document skills. So I entered the construction technology program and received an A degree in construction technology. The, also during that time, I was a, one of the programs that we had was in the college, if you were recommended by the teacher, you might be able to get a job. But it was not in the teacher's best interest in recommending anybody. His policy was that. But we had an opportunity to apply and do the test and become a master carpenter credential by having residential framing, residential forms, and residential finish work. Of that, I obtained a master's carpentry degree in that. It was kind of exciting to that. My coworkers at the time thought that you could probably purchase those at Kmart, but they weren't sure. But it meant a lot to me to be able to take a certified test like that on construction technology. One of the things that came up about that was, one of my instructors was a planner for the county. And he, people after taking his course, they said that it was so detail-oriented that you didn't wanna build again. I took it that once you knew the rules, it made it more exciting to be able to know what was allowed and what wasn't and why you should do that and have the technical ability to deal with that issue. Been on the planning commission now for a term and a half. So I'm gonna say six years on the planning commission in Dunsmere. We have the responsibility on the planning commission to change, do variances, change things, non-conforming lots, things that need changed to better, make better use of the community. One of the issues that comes to my mind is now is that I have approved a lot, and we've done a lot of things planning on the planning commission that have not come to fruition for one of many reasons. And I think that's what I, why, why I am running for city council is to help correct some of that and get some issues, projects moved forward.
Thank you. Okay, so I thought that I had turned those on. I'm sorry. Onto the set of questions for the first half of the, of the meeting here. The first topic is general information, again, allowing the voters to get to know you as candidates a little bit more. The first question is, what motivated you to run for city council? And Amit, let's start with you, and then we'll go Dwight and then Sarah.
My decision to run for city council was driving by a deep concern for our bad local economy. And also unfortunately, in effectiveness of current leadership by in addressing the, the housing crisis issues and, and economic growth. So as I witnessed, businesses are struggling with their finances. Families are struggling with rising costs and affordable housing. So I believe that together, we can revitalize our economy and create sustainable housing initiatives and foster thriving community where everyone has the opportunity to succeed. It is time, I believe that it's time for a new approach that truly represents the need of our residents and their well-being. That's why I'm running.
Okay, very good. Dwight?
That is, was, was a big indication why I decided to try to move up from being on the planning commission to apply for these two vacancies. I think that during my term on this planning commission, we have worked through many projects, like I say, none of which were that controversial, but I've also seen that some things do get left out. One of which was the Travelers Hotel when we gave the permit for the Travelers Hotel. And that was a good, good project, well-funded, well, originally well-funded. And there were certain things missing, like there was no elevator on the third floor, and I questioned that. And they told me that they did not need one. And the fire marshal basically said, we have our new ladder truck. With our new ladder truck, it would be most enjoyable to rescue people out of that building. I knew that there was different because in McLeod, California, the McLeod Inn cannot use the dormitories on the top floor because they're, they do not have an elevator. So little things like that, being new on the planning commission, the only effort that I could actually make to defend or not defend that was, I had also noticed there was no elevator door on the bottom floor on the existing plans. They says, no, there's not. So I asked on public forum, can I have that door that doesn't exist? And some of the times that I've learned that it's very hard to ask the questions if you really wanna get the answer to without being derogatory or being a know-it-all. So that is something, I think, by being on the planning commission, I would be able to find out some of the things that I think would help the, the town grow forward. So that kind of other projects we've, we've done, I think, comes, come to fruition. We've had, comes to me, I said this at a meeting a few weeks ago, about the only three or four things that have come together that the planning commission okayed in the past, where we have yellow doors on the bakery. We have a Savior sign on the sauerkraut building. And not a whole lot other than that has transpired, has actually come to fruition. Very few projects have come about.
Okay. Second question, we'll begin, oh, I'm sorry. Sarah, excuse me. Please.
My motivation for running is that I just, I remember coming up here as a kid and I absolutely loved it. It was a place that I loved visiting. And then, like I said, I came back here with my family. And I just wanna help try to make it the town that it used to be, full of businesses and, you know, bustling restaurants and things like that. I worked at the Cornerstone, like I said, for, since I was 15 until I was about 22. And we used to have a line out the door. There were so many people waiting to get in, and I would just love to see Dunsmere be that kind of bustling place again. I would also just love it to be a place that, you know, I have three kids. And I would love to raise them here and have them be proud to live here and raise their families here. And when they move away, they'll wanna come back here someday.
Okay. Now question two. And we'll start with Dwight this time here. What are three things that you hope to accomplish if you are elected to the city council?
I'd say probably the first thing that I would wanna see happen is more transparency in government. Quite often, I have attended every, probably 90% of all city council meetings over the last six years. And I feel that that was the best way for me to obtain information and get information as it was happening, as it was going on. When I make comments, usually it's comments to Brown Act, things that need corrected or posting of documents, timely manner. One of the things that does irritate me in government, in this government, is we tend to have a lot of special meetings when there's issues that need to be discussed. And the term, and they only have to be noticed 24 hours in advance, not to 72 hours. And I'm kind of a nut for getting up in the morning on Monday and making sure that the agenda is posted and if not, letting city council know. The second thing that is important to me is protection of private property rights in Dunsmere. And that goes several different directions. One of the things that allows me to, to have a little bit of insight into how things are done with property management here is there seems to be a lot of separation between not just building businesses, but I see it in the, the housing element. I see where people come into this town and they buy a place, and the very first thing I see is the door is setting outside. And when the doors are setting outside, they're gonna be ruined. And these are vertical grade and dug fur doors. And I would like to see the housing element escalated. Rin County, a house the size that we have here is worth a million dollars. So I'd like to see the, the outline areas. I'm more interested in that than I am the downtown area because I think that that's the key to, to Dunsmere is the revitalization of property, individual properties.
Thank you. Sarah?
Um, something, three things that I would like to do is I'd like to help like service the residents and find a way to bring jobs here to make it so that we actually have people who want, move here and stay. I would like to help accommodate the tourists a little bit more when they do come here. Try to find a way to improve the trail to Hedge Creek and to Moss Brae so that when they do go visit, they are not leaving their trash behind and, you know, other things. Because those are beautiful places and they're not, with social media, their, their popularity is not gonna go down. So making that easier for people to see and helping them keep it clean when they come and respect the area that they visit would be good. And then I would also like to just figure out a way, like I would love to see downtown cleaned up and with businesses in it and things like that. And then also just general infrastructure of the town, like the sidewalks and things like that, so that, you know, kids can ride their bikes and go on walks and things like that without the worry of stepping in dog poop or tripping on a crack and things like that. So those are some things that I'd like to do.
I would like to say that I totally agree with Dwight and Sarah. I wish we could run nine things we could hope to achieve over here. So my primary goals are to, to straight, to create a strong local economy, affordable housing, or the housing affordability. Let me put it that way. When we say affordable housing, people have different ideas, what kind of houses that we're gonna get. And also, if it is possible, increase the academic performance of our schools. I believe that these three objectives are interconnected and must be worked simultaneously for maximum impact. Thriving local economy can create job opportunities, stimulate investment, which in, in return can lead to better housing options for the residents. Meanwhile, stronger school will attract families to our community, further boosting our economy and ensuring that our children receive the quality education that they deserve. By focusing on these critical areas together, we can build a vibrant, sustainable community that supports the well-being of all its residents.
Very good. Question number three, and we'll go back to you, starting with Sarah. How would your presence on the council contribute to the council's effectiveness?
I believe that my presence on the council, I have the motivation to try and get the town back on track. Like I said, I wanna, I'm raising my kids here, and I think that gives me a good motivation to try to get things, you know, the way that I like, I remember I used to walk downtown and, you know, go to the video store and go to Gary's and the Barger Barn and things like that. And I just would like to see it back like that. I think that I have the motivation. I'm young. I'm willing to learn the things and yeah, sorry.
Amit?
I think I can significantly increase the council effectiveness in several ways. But one of them would be economic development. My business experience and educational background can allow me to understand the market dynamics and identify the opportunities for economic growth. The second thing would be the effective communication. We, I'm sure we all noticed that the city or the council is not as effective as they should be with communicating with their residents. Some of the anger increases because of that. Uh, some of the anger increases because of that. So I'm hoping, um, I can help bridge that gap between city hall and its residents. And the last thing is the advocacy for the resources. With my understanding of budgeting and finance, I can advocate for better allocation for the city resources.
Dwight.
As I said earlier, I've attended probably about ninety percent of all city council meetings. Pattern that I see over and over again, recommendations come to the council in the form of staff report. And it kind of troubles me at times, the staff report, we don't have a large staff. We're not a metropolitan area. And I feel that when the staff report comes in, it shouldn't be as it's been in third person. That's like oven pertaining to mankind would envision and things that one would write when he's writing a term paper. And when I see the word staff and it's written by, say, our city manager, I think it should be done in first cab, first person. I feel it should be done this way. And I think that gives a lot more leadway. And I think many things get overpassed in how the, the staff report and the wherethes and these direction that they want staff to go, I think it gets overlooked many times. A prime example is that we let go our James, our planner, or not planner, our permit person. And the very next week, the staff report came in and the staff report indicated that it wanted the staff to give the city manager the ability to write the contract and find a person. If a per body is going to terminate a position, that body should be the one that that initiates the lead. That's not something the city manager, in my opinion, should be doing. And I told them at that time that you are, the document in front of you, it does not say what you are indicating it says. It gives the authority, you're giving up your authority and giving it to an employee to handle. And less than two weeks later, we know how that is. We're a hundred and something days into it and we still have not resolved that issue. And I think that that was a mistake from the gate. There have been other things along the line, I think, that by working with them that I can help.
Thank you, Dwight. Um, on to the fourth question, we'll start with Amit. Uh, the fourth question is, um, how do you now and how will you stay in close touch with the residents of Dunsmere and keep current on the issues facing the city?
Yeah, uh, we can achieve that with several strategies. I mean, it's current council, they have meetings twice, twice a month. The surveys and tools they somehow city utilize, utilize that, uh, here and there. The one important thing could be, I know that Dunsmere communicates through social media. Uh, social media would be one of them. Uh, the newsletter, we don't have a local newsletter right now, but uh, as a business owner, not as a councilman, I plan on working a newsletter, uh, which might be called Dunsmirian. So that is work in progress. Uh, the, the next strategy could be, I would like to allocate office hours every month, two to four hours. Uh, we will increase it as needed to sit down with the residents and, and listen to their concerns and suggestions. Uh, the next could be, uh, the collaborating with the local organizations. Uh, partnering with the community groups, schools, nonprofits and stay connected with them. The, the next strategy could be a feedback mechanism. Uh, connect with the residents either through email, phone or text message. And the, the last thing that I would like to do is listening tours, you know, once a month, try to walk in certain neighborhoods, knock their door. If I'm allowed, you know, speak with them face to face and understand their concerns and suggestions.
Thank you. Sarah, I, or is that right? I'm sorry. I lost track of where we were. So we, did we start with you and then, yeah. Okay, so Dwight. Yes, that was the, uh, sorry, Ahmed, uh, answered the first, uh, was the first to answer the fourth question. So Dwight, please. The question is, um, how do you now and how will you stay in close touch with the residents of Dunsmere and keep current on the issues facing the city?
I would, I would again attend all the meetings. I've heard some people say that if you're on a plan, on the city council, it's kind of courteous not to attend planning commission meetings. I have to respect that. People have said that that's kind of a polite way, allowing the planning commission to work as they are. As you know, many times that has not been happening. There are individuals that get involved at that level that are on the city council. So I think that, like I say, I think that many people run for office, they tell you what they're going to do. And I think it's really important to honor the people that are there right now. And in that, I mean that I serve in the planning commission at their discretion and I honor their moves. So quite often when I see mistakes happening, rather than try to be blatant about how to correct them immediately, because it may, it may or may not be my role, that I try to look at it and figure out that when a problem comes up, then I can offer a better alternative solution. And that's something that I've done with the current city council and I think I think it's the best way to handle things is by, by working with individuals, but also more things we need to be transparent in how they are conducted.
Thank you. And Sarah.
Um, I, how I keep in touch mostly now is social media and that's, I think, a good opportunity. I think it could be expanded on a little bit more. I think that council people can probably reach out a little bit more um, and ask what they could do for the city and be receptive to responses. I also think that holding forums and like Q and A's every now and then, maybe once a month or every other month would not be a bad idea. Um, and I also agree with Amit there that, um, holding office hours, I don't know where we could do that, maybe in different businesses and things like that and have people come up with questions and be willing to listen and answer anything that we can.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, shifting topics now, um, to the Dunsmere Downtown Revitalization Plan. And Dwight, you will have the first opportunity to answer question number one with this. The question is, um, do you support the Downtown Revitalization Plan? Why or why not?
The Downtown Revitalization, uh, Plan currently working is we have, through a grant-funded organization, we've been able to get some assistance to help us try to plan for the future and do things overall. At the same time, the physical thing, I could call it overt covert in that the current plan seems to be, we have hired Curtis Wright Association at a large sum of money, who the current plan is to tag as many buildings and households. He came on the air, on the TV, we met him and he was hired. He was going to help us with the three hundred unutilized houses. We knew at the fact that he was not talking about that, that was hearsay, she said, he was concerned about the downtown area. The current plan of putting liens on the buildings to enforce code situations is not working for Dunsmere. It's not going to work. It is going to leave the town in a very bad shape. We are going to end up with most of these downtown buildings. Some of them will be torn down because our lack of response and how they are, finding people does not work.
So if I can interrupt Dwight, I'm sorry. Um, we do have some questions regarding the abandoned building ordinance, uh, which is relevant to what you're talking about now. Um, we're right now trying to focus on the revitalization, the five strategies.
Again, I, I think that the organization, the revitalization, when I go to the meetings and I listen and I read the surveys and conduct the surveys, I think most of that is good. When the planning commission, we did a, uh, the update to the state. We did the update to the state, almost all the plans that could come about, whether it be low, loans for housing, homes for businesses, loans for that to be repaid. Everything came back to when the planning commission did this, almost every single thing said, who's in charge? And every one of them said, the city manager or the city manager and the planner. I asked our planner at the planning commission meetings, I says, if you're, all this information and all these programs are going to be put on you and the city manager, are we going to have to pay you more? I was told this is just something we mail into the state by the planner, by Rico. And then he said that most of these things will not come to fate because the city manager and I don't have time for that. I think those programs that we're going to bring about should be lower into people's hands, whether it be the city council, whether it be the planning commission, or whether it be the townspeople themselves. Put the power back there.
Thank you. Um, Sarah, uh, the question again, uh, do you support the Downtown Revitalization Plan and why or why not?
Um, I do support the plan. I will admit that it is something that's pretty new to me and I just found out, I mean, I just I'm learning more about it recently. Um, I think that it's a great opportunity to help us grow to our fullest potential. I think that, um, the way that things have been run in the, for the last twenty years have kind of allowed things to diminish a little bit. And I think it's a great opportunity to buy into it and use the grant money to try and improve the town in various ways for not just tourists, but for citizens as well.
Thank you. Amit.
Yeah, I do support the plan. Uh, there are several reasons, important reasons why I do that. The first revitalization can, uh, increase the community's aesthetic appeal, which will attract more visitors and boost, boost the local economy. Uh, this is not only, this not only helps economic growth, but also creates uh, a vibrant atmosphere that encourages community engagement. Uh, additionally, restoring downtown can improve safety and accessibility, making the area more inviting for residents and tourists alike. Uh, by investing in the infrastructure and beautification of downtown Dunsmere, we are not only preserving its, uh, unique character, but also ensuring its sustainability for the, uh, next generations. So, uh, the revitalized downtown can serve as a central hub for culture, commerce and community connection that ultimately enriching the quality of, uh, quality of life for, uh, all of our residents.
Thank you. A follow-up question to the, uh, revitalization plan or related to the revitalization plan, and we'll start with Sarah this time. Uh, given that the plan was adopted by the city council, which of the plan's five strategies and ten action items would you give the highest priority and why?
Um, of the five action plans, I would say that, um, the downtown environment would be a big one, giving the town a little facelift. Um, I feel like that also kind of goes hand in hand with the bringing small businesses into town. If you give the building a facelift, you need to put a business into the building that's sitting empty. Um, I believe that that would boost our local economy and bring people in. Um, residents in, the more residents that we have, the, you know, we, the school um, enrollment would go up and that would help build the school and funding for that. So I feel like those two things go hand in hand there. Um, and then I think that it would be a very good idea to lean into the tourist aspect of it, the bringing in. Same thing with bringing in small businesses that can help accommodate, you know, tourists, PCT hikers, um, people who want to see the, the waterfalls and all that this area has to offer. And as to the ten, um, steps, I am not educated on that enough to speak to them.
Okay. Thank you. Amit.
So the, the three strategies that I picked was, uh, one of them is improving downtown business environment and pedestrian centering areas in downtown. The second one is small business assistant and entrepreneurship strategy. Do we, we really need that in, in our town? And that, there are entrepreneurs in our town that need help to assist them, how to build the business, how to run the business. And, and now we have a, a, a new leadership at the Chamber of Commerce. We can utilize, utilize that, that, uh, organization to help whoever wants to get into the business and, and do business in downtown. Uh, the third one is leveraging natural recreation and, and tourism. Uh, the ten action items, I, I picked six of them, although I believe ten of them are uh, very attractive. Okay. Uh, the, the second one is encouraging and attracting private investments. Uh, pursuing, uh, grant funds will be third of, third of them. Uh, marketing Dunsmere is very important one. I don't think we do a great job, uh, marketing the city. We all believe that the city has a great potential and, and somehow we need to bring that up. Uh, evaluating.
It's hard to tell in this room, but it's awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Again, repeat the question.
Yes, Dwight, um, given that the plan was adopted by the city council, which of the plan's five strategies and ten action items would you give the highest priority and why?
When I filled out the strategy, it's been some time ago, uh, some of the priorities that, that I'm going from memory now, some of the priorities I think were like you said, the revitalization plan talked about, uh, ten different items and I'm, I lose me now as to which strategy is which. I do believe that the downtown area with an improved marketing plan would be good. It also talked, I think, about the priorities for um, how that was going to come. There was some discussion of how things were going to actually be mandated or gone through with that. But I, I, when I filled it out, I saw very little in that that was going to be a higher priority to others. I considered, I think all of them were had a very high one. I think most of the things that I answered on priority were, uh, mid-level to important. And I, uh, so I'm a little vague on what I'm saying about how it, how the implementation plan. I know that when we hired that company, they said that they were going to be around to help us implement that plan. And I'm not sure that that was, I thought that was a high priority, that what they did was going, they were going to stick with us for a while. And there's been a lot of discussion at the city council level on that. So I would think sticking to it would be part of it. Again, my fear is that with that marketing survey and that revitalization plan appears to me not to know what is actually happening in the downtown area. appears to me not to know what is actually happening in the downtown area.
Thank you. And one more question related to the revitalization plan. So much of the plan's success relies upon the city's ability to establish, strengthen and expand public-private partnerships. How would you make those partnerships happen? And we'll start there with Amit.
So there are several strategies, uh, we can, uh, follow to succeed this. One of them is to identify the stakeholders. You know, create a list of potential partners, including local businesses, community organizations, government agencies and residents. So, uh, understanding who has a vested interest in the revitalization will help in building partnership. The second, uh, strategy that we, that I can have is creating incentives. Uh, offering incentives for businesses and organizations uh, to participate such as, I'm not sure if we can do this, such as tax breaks. Uh, grants and promotional opportunities. Uh, the next would be, uh, leverage resources. What I mean by that is that identify and leverage existing resources such as local funding, grants or volunteers to support partnership initiatives. And the last one is going to be the regular communication. Maintain open lines of communication with all partners and make sure that everybody is in line with the progress. So.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, same question Dwight. How would you make the public-private partnerships that are so essential to the success of the revitalization plan?
They say that a rising tide floats all ships. And I think that then the downtown area that working together is going to make, is going to raise that level. Working with the private, public, private, uh, organizations, we have to be aware of the fact that I don't think anybody's going to come into Dunsmere and offer us a bag full of money to make these plans happen. I think that we have to be well enough informed with what buildings we have, the purpose of the buildings, maintaining the buildings so that they are available when somebody comes along. We currently have several buildings in town that may or may not be able to move forward. Again, the Traveler's Hotel for one. They came back, we gave them three years to vitalize their program. He brought in investors to look at that building. They came back because of the pandemic and asked for two more years continuance. We were informed at the planning commission level and at city council level that once a major plan like that is passed, it cannot be rescinded for not, for six years after the original. We, we could have give them, we could have given them, so they could have asked for and received six years to complete the project. Instead, they were able to ask for two years. Funding has gone away on that particular project. And the owner of that is, has some medical issues. I would like to see a private company come in to do that. I think not listing them as condos and listing them as other sources would be good. Currently, the, the permit on that says that they are going to build condos. And there was a street parking issue with that. There was also, uh, other issues. So I think it is just having the buildings ready would help.
Thank you Dwight. And, uh, Sarah. Again, same question. Um, so much of the plan's success relies on public-private partnerships. How would you go about, uh, making those partnerships happen?
Um, I'm pretty inexperienced in this line of communication, so that would be definitely a learning opportunity for me to learn how to reach out to people, but I would think that, um, community outreach, advertising, um, things like that to try to build those relationships would be a good way to go about it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to another topic here, the abandoned building ordinance, uh, was adopted by the city council. Um, I'm going to combine the question here for the sake of, uh, saving a little bit of time. Um, you can answer, uh, a kind of a yes or no to the first question and then maybe delve into a little bit more detail with the second one. The first one would be, do you support the ordinance? And the second would be, uh, if elected, would you prioritize implementation of the ordinance? Why, why not? And how? So Dwight, we'll start with you first. Um, do you support the ordinance and then would you prioritize implementation if you were elected?
Again, going back to transparency, my original opening statement, being in the planning commission for six years, watching the city council for the past six years, there are still aspects of that, I think that, uh, even though it was passed, that have very little to do with what was originally, why we hired Curtis Wright was to come in and to, uh, put leans on buildings. He told the city council, uh, that when asked if there was lawyers involved with this. City manager says, yes, lawyers are a big part of this. And I told the city council, I think when you put fines on all of these buildings and somebody comes in and pays them off, that we can really help the homeless. I thought that was not a proper thing at the time. We have, last January, the, in other ordinance was passed, forming an ad hoc committee for codes to change the codes and to read, do the codes. I made them think that I thought an ad hoc committee was members of the community involved with this thing, changing the codes. I thought that all members of that committee should file their 700 forms, conflict of interest. Make sure that they were working not for themselves, but were working for the public. It ended up after passing, immediately our city manager picked two of the sitting council members and made the ad hoc committee. On our board, it states that an ad hoc committee is a committee formed to solve a particular issue and then be dissolved. There has been only one indication, uh, in the last year of that committee meeting or posted. Meetings were supposed to be posted 72 hours in advance. It was a, uh, ad hoc committee that is not listed on our, even though it was passed, is not listed on our website. There is no indication of that. I think first of all, that committee either needs to come forward and tell you what kind of codes that they were going to change. And if it was to implement their plan of tax, I would want to see that reviewed.
Thank you. Sarah, so, uh, the first part of the question is, do you support the ordinance? And then the second part is, would you prioritize its implementation if you were elected?
Um, I would absolutely have to investigate what the, in ordinance entails in more detail before I can speak to whether what priority I would make in implementing it. Um, but I do agree that there needs to be some kind of repercussion for having buildings sitting empty and being degrading over time. Um, I find it very sad to see some of the old buildings, like the theater and things like that, just sitting there empty and wasting away. So I do agree with the ordinance, but how high of a priority I would make it, I have to see what that entails in implementing it.
Thank you. Amit.
Uh, I do support the ordinance and, um, I would prioritize the implementation of this ordinance. Uh, by first, uh, conducting a comprehensive inventory of all abandoned properties uh, in the area. I'm, I'm sure this has been done. Uh, I'm not sure how, uh, comprehensive it is. Uh, this assessment will help to identify, uh, which buildings will need immediate assistance. Uh, attention, let me put it that way. I will then, uh, collaborate with local stakeholders, including the property owners, uh, community members and the city officials to, to develop a clear action plan. With that plan, I, I don't think we can go that far. Additionally, I would advocate for increased funding and resources to support, uh, to revitalization of these properties.
Thank you. Um, that, uh, concludes the prepared questions here. Um, and let's, uh, it's almost, um, six o'clock. Let's take about a 10-minute break. Um, audience, you've been wonderful. I really appreciate your attentiveness and your, um, cooperation with the ground rules. Uh, we do have pizza available. Um, and we've got some La Croix, uh, flavored fizzy waters here and some uh, Castle Rock, our, our very own Dunsmere's, uh, best water on earth, uh, water source. So, um, help yourselves, uh, mingle a little bit. You can talk with the candidates uh, and then we'll reconvene in 10 minutes. Thank you. There is.
Hello.
Can get into the smallest spaces. So ditch the debris, nix the nest and remove fuel from the fire. It only takes a little bit of time to keep your home, your property and your family safe.
So you're doing a little work around the house. How about adding just one more quick thing that will help your home survive a wildfire? In this mitigation minute, how to ditch the debris by nixing the nest? What we're talking about is the stuff that gets stuck in the gutters. And those places on your roof where leaves, sticks, and everything else just seems to end up, including the nooks and crannies around the foundation. Think of that debris like a bird's nest. But instead of baby birds, imagine embers from a fire carried by the wind, making themselves at home where they smolder for hours, even days before bursting into flames. That's how most homes are lost during a wildfire. Victims of those sneaky embers that can get into the smallest spaces. So ditch the debris, nix the nest, and remove fuel from the fire. It only takes a little bit of time to keep your home, your property, and your family safe. So you're doing a little work around the house. How about adding just one more quick thing that will help your home survive a wildfire?
All right, it's time to start up again. Please finish up your chats and find your seats. All right, please find your seats. Grab a drink, grab a pizza and sit back down. We're going to get started. All right, last call, find your seats. We're going to get started. Well, we start, I just want to say a big thank you to Peter Arth and Jeannie Rogers for the pizza and the drinks. Thanks.
Very nice. Welcome back, everybody. Before we get started on the second part of the questions, I want to express my thanks for each of the candidates who have come. This is not an easy thing to do. Serving on the city council is not an easy thing to do. It's often kind of a thankless position to be in. Your thoughts and actions, ideas and words are scrutinized on a daily basis. And there's no compensation to speak of for performing that service to the community. The fact that you are willing to, despite all of that, step up and put out your name and put your name in the hat to serve on the city council is honorable. And I'm sure we all agree that we thank you for your willingness to step up and do that for the community. So thank you very much for that. Okay, we have a collection of questions that have been submitted by the audience here. And prior to the meeting, some were submitted in advance. Often they will repeat the same concerns. So in that case, we will summarize some of the questions again, we won't get to. But that would be an opportunity to meet with some of the people out there and find out what their concerns are if their questions haven't been asked or answered here in this forum. So again, this is kind of related to our last topic from the last session related to abandoned buildings. And the question is, what are your solutions to the two key buildings of this city? The theater and the Dunsmere Hotel coming back to life as part of downtown revitalization? And I think we left off with Dwight. So Sarah, if you would take the first shot at that question, please.
Um, if I'm being honest, I don't know exactly how much we are allowed to overstep and what we can as council members do to encourage them. But what I'd love to see, especially in the theater, would be getting movies back in the theater. Whether it be, you know, probably not new movies, but older movies, movies for kids, have a kids' night, things like that. Um, I'm not sure how far the city council or the city can go into implementing those things though. But I would absolutely love to see those. And then the Dunsmere Hotel. I believe they're residential right now. So I'm not sure what we can do about that. But I would love to see both of those buildings back to their former glory.
Thank you. Amit.
I think both buildings, especially theater, is very important for the town. I hope we can find a way to activate that building. I, what I would do is to keep a really close communication with owner of the building. I know that this has not been successful so far. He has his own plans, his own dreams for the building. And city has been trying to do something about it. I know there are volunteers who are trying to make that theater to open up. What I would, what I would say is that I would definitely, if I elected, I would definitely look into it and try to find a way to make this work. Create a clear plan, action with the, with the owner, with the city, what city can do. I agree with Sarah, we don't know how much as a council, how much we can step in, how much we can push. So we need to figure those out and then create a plan and then move forward.
Thank you. And Dwight.
The theater and the, what we used to be called the Weed Hotel are two very important buildings in town. I have seen so much trial and turbulence over these two buildings. I do think that they would be a good partnership, public, private, private partnership in those two buildings at least. I enjoyed staying at the Weed Hotel many times coming up here skiing. I also enjoyed the theater. But again, when it comes to property rights, there are things we can do, things we cannot do. When we sent the planning commission and the city council sent our six or eight year plan into the state. It talked about loan programs. It talked about for both houses for major buildings like that. So far, that's not been implemented because again, it relied on only two people. And that was the city manager and a planner. At the time, we had a planner. I think we missed a big boat when we didn't have a planner. We still have a planner we just hired recently. Somebody contacted him last week on an issue and he says, yeah, I've got a contract. I'm not sure what is, what we're going to do with it. But yes, I do have a contract with your city. I don't see that that is going to be anything. I think the, the, those issues should be developed more locally, whether it be the city council or whether it be the community at a whole. I would defend, like I say, I defend property rights when impossible, wherever possible. I do not think the plan that we have now for those buildings. Our marriage stood up, or our city manager just stood up the other day in a city council meeting, stayed in the amount of fines already issued on those buildings. I don't think that's good. Okay. I said in the recent past, in less than two meetings or three meetings ago, the city manager stood up and accused the owner of that building of owing $20,000 or more in fines. I don't think that's going to solve the issue with that building. I think what would solve the issue is a loan program, a community program that could help revitalize that. It takes money, it takes a lot of money. And it's not going to be done by putting more fines on the buildings.
Thank you. The next question. Kind of a two-part question, Amit, you'll go first. Do you believe that the costs of doing business or the regulatory burden on businesses downtown is too great? And if you do believe that, how would you go about trying to reduce the cost and regulatory burden for businesses downtown?
I, my experience with, with businesses in downtown is with the restaurants. And I'm also trying to build a couple of facilities that that are in progress now. Cost of the constructions, we can't do that, we can't do anything about it. I am not sure about the fees through the building department. I just hear gossips that sometimes it can be doubled for, for no reason. But the infrastructure of Dunsmere is not quite well. As a business owner, you have to spend quite a bit of money in order to get the business running. But the most important thing is that in doing business in Dunsmere, whatever business that you do, we just do not have enough. We, we don't generate enough revenue and that kind of causes to, to, you know, create a higher cost for the businesses. Hope that answers.
Thank you. Dwight?
It was discussed within last two months, this issue came up at city council. And currently it costs $1,000 to change the color of a downtown building. The process is that it would go to the planning commission for approval. When it was brought up that the fees in general were almost double, as I had pointed out, in the downtown area. The recommendation from the city council was to refer it back to the planning commission. That motion failed. The motion that came about was that they would, because it was a financial impact, they thought it should go back to the finance committee, which is a committee that I had served on. And Glenn Ford, our floor for lead, Lynn Foreman, served on and city council members. That would be a good place to start. But it also, a motion was made that very same time that at least the painting issue downtown should be drawn back and given to the planning commission to come up with a proper color code. And in this color code, by having that, it would no longer take a trip to the planning commission, which on most things costs that individual about $600. So that's where the, that comes out that they say it generally takes about $1,000 to be able to get a color change. The fact was that motion has never been the planning commission. I chose to go in and ask about it when we were going to have a planning commission meeting. And it was discussed one issue in a downtown building. So I thought it'd be a prime opportunity. I was told only the city manager makes the agenda. And it is impossible that I'm only on the planning commission. And if it never makes it to the planning commission, that's all right. But the fact is, when the city council does make a motion, I think that motion ought to be implicated. And I think that it, a lot of that could be handled at the planning commission level.
Thank you. And Sarah. I sure can. First of all, do you, part one, do you believe that the fees and regulatory environment is too burdensome on businesses downtown? And if so, how would you go about trying to reduce that, that cost and the regulatory burden on those businesses?
I'm not being a business owner myself, I'm not sure how high the costs are. But I would say that if those costs are getting in the way of putting businesses in and getting businesses up and running that need to be there. I think there should be a way to get those fees and fines lowered. Maybe by petitioning a hardship or something like that with the city to try to lower the costs. And I do agree that there needs to be some kind of regulation on like a color code and things like that so that somebody doesn't, you know, paint a business downtown bright pink or purple or something like that and be a glaring eyesore. But if the fees are getting in the way of allowing businesses to thrive and come in, then I would say that there definitely needs to be a way for those businesses to try and get that fee is lowered or waived.
Thank you. The next question is having more businesses in the downtown area would mean that more people will be in the community. The question really is, how do you feel or what is your view on infill housing and development of unused city land? So in other words, compacting or doing more multifamily housing within the city limits or doing infill development on vacant lands and so forth to accommodate housing if more people are encouraged to be here through revitalization and the economic development plan? If more people are encouraged to be here through revitalization and the economic development plan? And Dwight, we'll start with you.
Okay. Referring back to the plan that we just sent into the state, we went through the, all the, all the municipalities and the zoning on the planning commission in, in recent times, about a year ago. And when it come to multifamily dwellings and that, I remember reading that, I live up here on Castle Avenue and the freeway avenue is above me. Freeway Avenue has a fence along the freeway and is currently has one vacant lot there. That lot is one of the very few places that was rezoned to be for multifamily dwellings. I looked at that and thought, well, that's a little okay, but if you go to the Bay Area or someplace along the freeways, you see that building high density apartments close to a freeway is okay. There's currently some nice houses in that area, so I don't see that even though we rezoned that particular area for multifamily dwellings, I don't see it coming to pass in that particular area. I do believe that we did a good service. It was that all the properties along Dunsmere Avenue were listed as semi-commercial. And that did hurt the whole development and restoration of houses. Everybody thinks that they have a piece of commercial property that it's all of a sudden worth money, more money than it was. So sometimes municipalities will purposely zone these commercial. We took the advantage and rezoned these commercial and to be non-commercial, to be family dwellings as well, allowing a better plan to be used for whatever reason. I think that was a good decision that they, we did it. I'd like to see that implemented and I'm glad that they were able to see that and take off the commercial. It charged people for a commercial dwelling. It's one or two percent and about four or five points, which meant that an average low-income house cannot be built if it's a commercial piece of property.
Thank you. And Sarah?
When it comes to housing, I would absolutely think that it would be a good thing to utilize the vacant lots and put, you know, get more places for people to live. I see all too frequently posts on Facebook and things like that, people asking if anything's available. I know a lot of families are struggling to find affordable places to live. I also think that there's a, a really good opportunity to turn the travelers into something if the right person invested in it. I think that's it, would be a great multifamily business or housing area. I definitely think that it's something that the town should put more effort into trying to help find these people homes.
Thank you.
I think we all, we, most of us will, will agree that the housing affordability is a, one of the biggest issue in Dunsmere. There, there are a lot of people suffering because of that. The vacant lands, they should definitely be developed if that is possible. House of Glass is one of my first choice to, to develop for housing. It's close to downtown. It can help downtown businesses easily. If, if I'm not wrong, in the, in the Cosmont plant's airport, the, the eighty acres that close to the airport is in, in, in their plan as well. I'm not sure what kind of ideas they're going to come up with. In downtown, so for multi-units for businesses and new housing, as long as it works with the aesthetic of the city, why not? I think, I think we should, we should do that because it's going to affect our local businesses. So.
Thank you. And this question will start with Sarah. Seeing as this position with city council is volunteer and several of you have full-time jobs, live substantially out of the area, multiple businesses and families, how do you plan to manage a a sustainable commitment in this role?
Well, being a nurse, I am very lucky that I work three days a week. I actually work part-time right now, which means I work three shifts, one week and two the next. I'm also in charge of doing the schedule for my department, so I can definitely ensure that I can get, you know, city council nights off and things like that. I also have a very good support system for my kids. Both grandmas live in town, so they can watch my kids when I need. I have two older kids, so they can, they'll just kind of hang out and do their thing. But I, I have a pretty flexible schedule and I'm definitely willing to do the things that are necessary to help this work.
Thank you. Ahmed?
It, it's a good question. I, I, you know, through, through my life, I have had to handle several jobs, several positions, either as a son or either as a brother or husband. And I have two kids now. I have four active businesses. Few of them are in San Francisco, a couple of them are in Dunsmere. So it is, it is, it's not going to be difficult, but when I commit to something, I, I just get it done. Nothing is going to stop me. I have been in finance committee last two years. I don't think I have missed maybe just a couple of meetings is because of miscommunication of the date. I am a very hardworking guy. During my college years, I was an international student. Some of you may know, we have to pay quite a bit money in order to study in the school. I have handled eighty hours per week working with several jobs and taking twenty-one units. So working for the city and I have done that two semester and other semesters in San Francisco State University. I had to work at least sixty hours a week and I had to take, due to my alien status, I have to take minimum twelve units. But I, I was taking more in order to finish the college as soon as possible. So I know what, what hard work is, hard work is, and, and I'm committed to do that. I don't think serving Dunsmere is, as a councilman, is going to be a problem for me. Because at one point or at one age at your life, the money is not really important. Serving back to the community is the most important part for me. I want to see this city is flourishing with strong economy and I'll do as much as I can. I will, I, I'm sure that I'm not going to let anybody down.
Thank you. And Dwight?
I'd like to thank both of these for their answers. I think they did both a fine job of letting you know that they were capable of doing the job. I think I am retired. I do have obligations. But I think over the past six years, the one thing that I have been steady fest is when there's a meeting that I'm supposed to be at, I'm at that meeting. I point out that I have been to probably ninety percent of all city council meetings over the last four years, let's say. And planning commission meetings, I've, I've managed to, to be at almost every one of them. One of them I think I missed. So I don't think there's an issue there, but I do think that it is important to give back and I think it is important to be an ear. I think the transparency of working and talking with the citizens. It's kind of ironic when this town, we talk, the town does talk, we discuss issues. When I worked at the Shasta College, there was a issue revolving a certain person. And a lawyer came in and he says, you know, you guys talk amongst each other and you seem to know what's going on. But he says, the fact is, nobody actually gets that organized and, and puts it down. He says, myself being a lawyer is very easy. I can come in and what you guys talk about. He says, you have to realize when people talk, they're pretty honest. And so most of the things that I've heard throughout from citizens, I take it at heart. I know they're happening, but I also know that when I'm serving in the planning commission, the best I can do for people to say, I'll look into it. And I think that that's what a city council normally would do, would be look into it. But I think often on a current city council and in the past, it's not been happening. I point out that I believe there has been one planning commission meeting this year. And that is not me not showing up. That's the planning commission not showing up for me.
Thank you. And the last question, we'll start with Ahmed. How would you encourage civil discourse and peaceful cooperative problem solving if you're elected to the city council?
I think the main thing is we are all volunteering to this job to serve Dunsmere. If the, the main goal is to serve Dunsmere, I do not see any problem or I do not see any fighting over the council. We are all, and I know current council members, they're all educated. They have some type of experience either at work or in life. We are all grown men and, and we should be able to communicate professionally to understand each other. Of course, they will be, we should be able to criticize each other, but, but on a professional level. So as long as we keep it professional, I don't see any problem and, and we'll make sure that every meeting is civilized without attacking on a personal level and make sure that, because again, we are, we are all here to serve to people of Dunsmere, to, to its residents, its businesses. So it is going to be professional. That's what I like. I never have personal issues with anybody because in council, it is not the place to discuss and attack on a personal level. Again, we should be able to criticize ourselves according to the professionalism and keep the peace.
Thank you. Dwight?
Again, I think the citizens of Dunsmere very well see the issues that are going on. I would like to see where the citizens have a more opportunities for the input to be done in a public forum. I go to city council meetings and I see we're given three minutes to talk on an issue, but I don't see the places where people can meet and actually have their, their ideas expressed. I've seen a lot of discourse in, in Dunsmere. I have seen the discourse in, say, the California Theater. And I've seen how people are opinionated one way or the other on certain issues rather than get together and solving the problem. I pointed out that when I worked in Shasta College, we had a construction technology program. We would go out on the grade and build houses or remodels for people two days a week. You got the permission from the board to be able to do that. I think something like the hotel could be, if we handle it through the college construction technology program giving aid to, to, to help builders out, whether it be that building or another building, a system by which you go to the city council and you say, we're willing to have the college do some work on a house or on a building under construction or, or under the guise of a contractor. And I think that would go a long way to resolving some of the issues that are controversial.
Thank you. And Sarah?
I do agree with Ahmed on that things need to stay professional. I think a big thing would be to keep, try to keep as much of your personal emotion out of any kind of interaction. Try to stay rational and just don't engage when things do get heated. Just try to stay respectful and step away when you can tell that things are getting a little out of hand. Cause I know that there has been, there have been many instances where it kind of drama can get away. And I think that that's not really, city council isn't the place for it, especially in meetings and things like that. So staying rational, keep emotion out of it and taking a step back and thinking things through before responding.
Thank you. Thank you all. That concludes the set of questions coming in from the voters out there. So if you would like to take a moment to regroup and then take a minute or two or up to three to have a closing statement. And then we will adjourn the meeting. So I believe we started, Sarah, with you, with the opening statements. So this time we'll start with Dwight and go the other way. So Dwight, if you would like to make a closing statement, please do.
Yes. I think that I was told tonight and I've turned it, the meeting not long ago, Dunsmere is on the verge of various, very major changes. And I think in doing that, that one has to realize what direction do the citizens of Dunsmere want to go? Again, I come back to transparency. The end of a domain, when I am calling it end of a domain, by finding buildings in town and the three hundred homes. Currently in Dunsmere right now, if you have an underutilized home, you've got to pay five hundred dollars to let that whole house be known that it's vacant, needs repair. And I see that we have finally applied for some grants for that. I was troubled the other night when I saw that it put in four hundred thousand dollars for code enforcement. And I asked about that and I was told to go see the city manager, finance manager about that and discuss it with him in private, that he would talk to me about it. But I think now is the time to bring transparency to the citizens. I think that we've had some failed plans in this town, some plans that are not doing what they originally were meant to do. And I think as a member of the city council, I would take the opportunity to be able to express a view that could look through these issues and, and figure out why. If we are going to do the things that we are going to do in the town, I think we're going to see a bunch of vacant lots with the downtown buildings. And I don't want that to happen. I don't think anybody wants that to happen. We've just had a city manager who's taken some time off and has threatened to sue. I think the, I've never said that I want to terminate the city manager, nor am I going to say that here. I think that would devastate Dunsmere to have to look for a new city manager at this time. But there are many things that the council has put power into him over the last four years or two, three years that are obligations and things that a normal city manager does not do. One of which is the Mossberry Trail that we talked about and we now have signs up and donations. And it was determined that if you donated to the city of Dunsmere, you cannot write that off on your taxes. People like to have that tax write-off. That's why they, sometimes they give it. But currently, right now, the funds were put into a community group that is going to collect the funds to be distributed at a later date. They get five percent for that. I have no problem with that. The problem I have with that is our current city manager Dustin is the person who authorizes the release of those funds. Or the next city manager or an appoint, person to be appointed by city council to distribute those funds. That is something I think needs to be changed and I think it's not going to change by itself. I would like to be able to support the Mossberry Trail, but I cannot do it in its current state.
Thank you Dwight. Ahmed, a closing statement, please?
Okay, I, I really appreciate for you guys coming here, here and online. I am aware that there are a lot of challenges in the city to overcome. It is not going to be easy, whoever is elected. It is, but it is not impossible. There are always an angle or there is always a solution to get, overcome any challenges that we are facing. One of the thing that I have seen during living here since two thousand twenty, unfortunately, we couldn't be a, a community as a whole. There are always divisiveness, there are always negativeness in, in the town. But I can promise you this, if I elected, these are all going to be taken care of. I will be very active in the community, in the council, with the businesses, with the residents to make sure that with the residents to make sure that transparency is there, your voices are heard and do as much as I can to bring this town back to those glorious days. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sarah?
My dad loved this town. He, he just loved it. Sadly, he is not here with us anymore. But he always used to tell me that I needed to be a part of the change if I wished to see the change, that I would, that I could, shouldn't complain about something if I'm not willing to be a part of the change. And that's why I'm here today, so that I can try to be a part of it. So I can listen to the people and try to institute things to get the town back on track and help this town grow into its greatest potential.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay. Candidates, thank you very much. Audience, thank you very much as well.